So I'll call the planning and starting commission meeting to first item is roll call. Elsa, Michael Kane, Susan, Saldan, Steve Ovechek.
Here.
So we have all our members are present and absent is our alternative alternate measure person. Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meetings. We have June 11th. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of June 11th.
I would make a motion to approve that since.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Does anyone have any corrections? None? I had one, couple of minor items on page two. On Roman numeral two point two in this paragraph that says starts with Kevin Hickson. Down on line, the end of line three using demising. To me, that's not a proper term for this. I would put dividing.
Sure, sure.
I mean, that's Demising implies death or something.
Okay.
It's so weird. I think it probably just didn't. And on page. Oh, and above on that same page. In the top area where it goes through the paragraph that has some staff information. Then it opens the floor for public hearing, no public hearing comments. And then it opens it up to to commission comments. Then there's a staff explain the state noise. Is that out of order? I mean, it should have had some comment from the commission to do it, or it should go up with when the staff report, and I'm not sure.
So I think it was in response to a commission question.
Well, could you just add?
Yep.
Insert something in response to our question from the commission, the staff explained the state noise. Cause it just looks odd. Odd there. And on page five down at the bottom where I have a motion. See that? And it has findings and reasons for approval. That is really part of the what's read for the motion, so it should be indented.
Okay.
The findings and reasons, that whole section, I'd indent it so it lines up with the actual text for the motion.
Okay.
Otherwise, it looks like it's a separate happening and it really isn't. It's part of the That's all I have. No one else has anything else? Okay, so we have no other items and comments. We'll vote on approval of the minutes as amended for June 11th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Text is, item is public communications. Does anyone on the commission have any communications? Does staff?
No.
Have any? Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission tonight? This is the only time the public can make any comments. Yes, if you'd step up to the podium, speak into the microphone and that's removal and state your name and address.
Tom Farrel, I'm here with my wife Teresa Farrel. We live in thirty four Brookhaven Road. Starting to get a regular, your regular just meeting. And having said that, I'm, I'm not anti-business. I know there's a lot of time, money and effort that goes through these plans, but I'm also concerned about some uses of the zoning. And this is one of the current concerns with the gas station proposal. Not for it. I'd like to explain why. One, this is the proposal on three lots on intersection of Culver and Long Hill Road. One thing I'd like to make really clear is where this is. One of the lots seventeen, this isn't near a neighborhood or next to a neighborhood. This is in a neighborhood. One of the lots is seventeen Brookhaven Road. Brookhaven Road is a residential street. In fact, there was a house there until recently in the last year or two. It was taken down to try to develop the area. So that's an important part to me is Brookhaven Road is actually a residential street. This lot is on residential street technically seventeen Brookhaven. I won't spend a lot of time talking about the negative effects of the gas station, but I would like to mention them trash hazardous materials, noise, light pollution, traffic, potential crime. I would bet that even members of the commission, members in the audience, even applicant, wouldn't want a gas station in their neighborhood across the street from their house. Which is what it will be for me and some of my neighbors. One of the things I'd like to really point out is the zoning regulations. I've been to a couple of these meetings, so I kind of know what to expect. I would be, I bet the attorney will be sure to point to the zoning regulations and say, this is a permitted use in a CN zone as long as it meets commission, uh, conditions. Five dot one dash thirteen A, I believe it is. And say, this meets all the conditions, you must approve it. It's in your zoning regulations, you have to approve it. What he won't say is anything about the zoning regulation itself. Because there's nothing about the zoning regulation that implies a gas station would be a good fit. So if you look at the zoning regulation, which is a three dot three dash one dot the CN. The CN district is meant to accommodate lighter neighborhood serving retail in nodes or gateways that can serve as a smooth transition between commercial and residential uses. Nothing light about the gas station. It's all traffic as much as you can get. It's not a gateway. One side of Brookhaven Road, residential houses, the other side of the street, gas station. It's not a transition at all. It may include one unit dwellings, though two unit multi-unit dwellings are preferred in order to support commercial uses and serve as a buffer to neighboring residential districts. Again, not a buffer. One side is residential across the street is the gas station, literally across the street from my house. It's found under one corridor. So, okay, one thing might fit a gas station. High quality human scale design, this is the most important sentence. With an emphasis on pedestrian connections and green space is desired for development in this district as it is meant to play a transitional role between commercial and residential uses. Nothing says pedestrian connections and green space like a gas station. I mean, come on. And it always, it actually says emphasis on pedestrian connections. And at the end, as it's meant to play a transitional role between commercial and residential, it's no transition. It's commercial, street residence. I actually think the zoning regulation is very well written for that area. I think it's very appropriate. The problem is what's an acceptable use doesn't fit the zoning regulation at all. How do you say it's got to be pedestrian connections, green space, buffer, transition, and you say, okay, a gas station? I, I just don't get it. One of the issues I have with this is, and they did a very thorough traffic study. It's impressive. It's a hundred and six pages long. But traffic is going to be increased on in general on Long Hill Road, but especially Culver. We, we came across this last time I was here when we talked about the proposal for a drive-through. There's going to be a lot of traffic on Culver and the particular part I'm concerned about is they're keeping existing curb cut and to take out of the, the gas station and take a left to get to Long Hill Road, it might fit two cars or maybe three tops. Other than that, it's going to be very tight to get there. I did look at their study. Like I said, it's very impressive. So I took some of their data. There's an AMP hour that shows two hundred and sixteen total moon trips. Their study substitutes or subtracts twenty percent for the pass by, which I like to call magic math. They're saying, wow, you're not really coming here. You're just passing by. You'd be passing by if there's no gas station and you'd be keeping, you'd be going. There's going to be two hundred and sixteen cars at the peak hour in and out of this gas station. They say a hundred and seventy-two, which subtracts twenty percent. At the end of the day, that's traffic in and out congestion on Long Hill Road and especially on Culver. So I'm, I'm not a big fan of the pass by theory. One of their other studies, sorry, I said something that takes serious, must have taught me. One of their other data points shows traffic leaving Culver and turning right on Long Hill Road will double while traffic turning left will or droop from Culver to Long Hill Road. Because there's a right in from Long Hill and only a right out. Then there's an exit from Culver. You'll have to go left. That's where we'll see significant traffic. They did mention that the level of service would go down. The application, I think, underplayed it a little bit. In some cases, this will go down to a level C. So it's not really minor, which I think the worry might have been in the application. Those are my big problems with, with the plan. I do have, if, I know it puts the commission in a tough position because it doesn't fit the zoning at all, but it's an acceptable use. So what do you do? Who do you cite? So I'm asking if you side with approving the plan that you try to gear the application towards living correctly or nicely, if you will, with the neighbors. There was a pretty well-designed landscape plan. And I'm not, you know, I don't have a green thumb at all, so I don't know much about them, but I would request that whatever they put around the lot, especially in the back lot, be four season trees if you guys, you know, do approve this. So I don't want to look out my window and see a gas station in the winter. I want to see a tree. If I gotta look at a gas station, I want to see a tree in front of it. I don't understand why these applications never talk about hours of operations, but this is a residential neighborhood. So the hours of operations have to be considered that. There's no plans that I saw for vacuums on the site, but I would request that there never be any vacuums on there to keep the noise down and no music at the pumps. Another, you know, to keep the noise down and to live, you know, with the neighbors. There was signs, and this might just be in a generic reference, but there was one of the signs reference a drive-through. There's no reference of a drive-through in the plans themselves. Although maybe that was just a generic picture, but I don't think a drive-through would be appropriate here either. And that would be an accessory after the fact that accessory special use, I guess you would call it. And there was no indication of alcohol sales, but I would recommend or suggest that that never be part of this plan. Now we're in the future and I know there's other regulations you have to follow for that. And last but not least, if it does get approved, no parking on Brookhaven during construction is residential. In fact, there's a school bus stop for the neighborhood kids rate at Culver and Brookhaven. Which I should have brought up earlier, but I think part of the problem is when you come out onto Culver and take a left to try to get back on Long Hill Road, if it's crowded there, traffic's going to go down into Culver and Brookhaven. They're going to do a little loop and try to get back out. And if it's two hundred and sixteen trips an hour, that's like a car every twenty seconds. I just wanted to bring those things up and thank you for your time.
Does anyone else in the public wish to address the commission? Do you have anybody on the internet that's? No hands are raised. Okay, so we'll move on next to our next item is site plans. We have S I T twenty four zero zero six fuel dispensing station and convenience store three eighty-eight Long Hill Road. The applicant would like to make his presentation.
You just need to fit it in when as you're looking at the screen. That's pretty good.
This mic's on.
It's on. You can pull it out.
Pull it out of the stand.
Good evening. For the record, Sergio Terenzia with Terenzia and Associates offices at ninety-nine Mechanic Street in Pawtucket, Connecticut. I'm the site civil engineer. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut. The plans and the application before you this evening were prepared by my office along with the land survey. Plan stamped by, I believe, Mark Castellanos, my survey manager. There are some other plans in our plan set from other professionals that we've worked with, including our land state landscape architect, licensed landscape architect with here, with me here this evening is David Preco on behalf of the applicant, AR Energy LLC. He's the owner's representative. Peter Springstil is our project architect, also here this evening, and Mr. Todd Brayton, professional engineer and our traffic engineer. I'm going to take this microphone just so that I can go to the appropriate plan. Am I still flipping through, but excuse me. So I wanted to start with the, the land survey. Property located on Long Hill Road, also at the intersections of Culver and Brookhaven. There's three separate lots. All previously developed. There's been, you know, there's some, you can see from the survey, some significant sized trees currently on the lot, some areas that have gone kind of follow and just overgrown, but the three lots were previously developed, each with the individual buildings of varying square footages between six hundred square feet and over two thousand square feet each. Along with paved driveways and existing walkways. Most of those are, all of the structures have been removed, leaving, you know, some of the paved areas and driveways. And as I had mentioned, some areas are, are pretty, pretty well overgrown with some larger trees and grasses and, and just overall just some overgrown with some weeds and, and like. The, all three properties are zoned, commercial neighborhood. And according to the zoning map. Properties to neighboring to the east are zoned RS twelve for residential use and properties neighboring to the west across Long Hill Road are residential, multi-unit and commercial neighborhood. The site is mapped with a Charlton Chatfield complex. Soil category B NRS soils map. It's, we're located in a FEMA X zone, which is not a flood hazard, not any effective flood hazard zone. There are no documented or known wetlands on the site. There are wetlands adjacent and off-site. Basically down gradient and I believe to the north, northwest. North and northeast and to the north, excuse me, where this site discharges its storm water off of the property in generally in a, in a northerly direction into the stormwater system that's currently in, in Brookhaven and Culver. There's a catch basin system. You can see one of the catch basins on this existing conditions map. Right in Culver Ave. And that's where actually that'll be important as I get into the discussion of the storm water for the proposed use. So at this time, I'm going to flip over to our site plan. So what I've brought up is the grading and drainage plan. The proposed use for the property is a forty-seven hundred square foot building which has both the convenience store tenant space. I believe there's also going to be, and, and Peter can get into this a little bit more, more or less a tenant space that will serve some kind of, be some kind of probably like fast food type, type of use inside the, the actual type or the actual business to be, to take place there. It hasn't been determined yet, but it would be, you know, akin to like a sandwich shop, something. I don't believe it'll be a, a coffee shop, but it could be typical of convenience stores and gas stations. So there'll be the convenience store aspect of it and the, you know, the cash register for the, for the fuel sales as well. Among others, storage for the building. The site also includes all required parking. We worked with staff on making sure that we've accommodated and broken down all the square footages in the building to identify what the parking is attributed to each one of those uses. So it's a very detailed analysis with respect to the particular use of this facility. And how many parking spaces that we require, I believe it's twenty-five. We've accommodated all the accessible parking. That's on a different plan. I can show you that next. And that is, is located in a, in the area closest to the, to the front of the building. As identified, there's fueling stations outside the convenience store for gas fuel. The site will be bituminously paved with curbing. All of the storm water that's accumulated on roofs and paved surfaces will be collected by a catch basin drainage system. We conducted soil testing on site to support the design of our, our drainage system. You can see on the, behind the convenience store, there are these boxes. That is the subsurface infiltration system. I can show you details for that, but basically they're a dome shaped plastic type of storm water containment that goes, that is set in crushed stone that's surrounding it. So the storm water from the site will be caught in the catch basins, be piped to this system. And we'll go through what we call an isolator row for, for our preliminary treatment to capture the water quality volume. And then the rest of the system is designed to handle the volume and attenuate the peak discharges of that storm water before it discharges offsite. We had originally just discharged it, same as the site does onto Brookhaven. But working with staff and the Department of Public Works, they preferred that we tie the overflow in to that catch basin I pointed out earlier. So this system is designed to attenuate those flows and the only thing that you're going to be seeing is, is the overflow off the, off of this system. Everything's underground. There's no at surface detention. Everything's going to be stored in the underground and infiltrate what we can. And then during the larger storm events, that will overflow to the downstream system. As such, we had to go through a pretty involved evaluation of the drainage system in Culver Ave and through Brookhaven to make sure that that system could adequately handle the overflow from our, our site. So that, that analysis was done and submitted for town review and I believe has been accepted. As far as the utilities go, there's all rotten utilities, public water, sewer, electric and communications, and I believe gas service as well available at the site and will be coordinated with the utility companies for connection, any at-grade transformers that we need to do. And we've gone through a pretty exhaustive process with your technical review committee and your staff to make sure that we've accommodated their, incorporated their comments. I believe that we've addressed probably ninety percent to maybe everything, but I'm sure there'll be some coordination issues as we proceed. As far as hazardous materials, we are abiding by all of DOT and OSHA requirements as far as, and national fire protection. For being, this is a fueling station. There are strict, strict requirements for that. And we'll be sure to make sure that we abide by all of those rules and regulations as far as storage of, of certain materials. The convenience store will have things like, you know, windshield washer fluid on hand, you know, motor oil, that kind of stuff that are typically sold in a convenience store and will be stored properly and and obviously the, the fuel dispensing station will have its own requirements, which we'll abide by. Wanted to back up to the site layout plan. This, this plan shows better the, the parking layout and the, I can touch upon the traffic flow. Mr. Brayton is here to answer more detailed questions if you have regarding traffic. You can see that we've have some, had the parking spaces along the front of the convenience store, which are, you know, located there for convenience to get in, some along the side and then some along the rear. Probably these will be for for mostly staff, staffing employees, a loading zone in front as required by the regulations. Believe that we have a couple of parallel spots along the front as well. And the ADA spaces, which you've identified that can be accessed easily to the front doors of the convenience store. The rear of the property, there's a significant grade change to the rear. We have paid special attention to the design in that area. Your zoning regulations do have pretty strict rules with respect to walls. So we, and rightfully so, it's can, we, we believe that the design that we've come up with in conformance with the zoning regulations. Those walls, I believe, are limited to four feet with ten feet in between, but you'll have a tiered situation as opposed to a very, you know, imposing wall or a single wall of, of eight or ten feet. So it'll be broken up and we can, I'll show you the landscape plans next on that, but it'll there'll be some landscaping incorporated into the, into this tiered wall system. There's, which is, I think has become relatively popular at some of these convenience stores for people that are traveling to have a place to sit, especially if there's going to be a takeout type restaurant or, or takeout food in the, in the convenience store. A small, you know, sitting area for people that may want to sit back there and, and eat or rest. We have sidewalk accessibility coming from the sidewalk off Culver to get directly to the sidewalk in front of the convenience store for those folks that are coming here by foot, as well as I think a bike rack we've added in there as well. The signage. There's an existing sign on the corner of Long Hill Road in Culver. That will, that will remain. I can show you the signage plans. We'll get to that plan next. Just wanted to touch upon, oh, sidewalks will be doing some sidewalk improvements along Culver in areas that need to be repaired or changed for ADA compliance or whatever, just to make sure we're in regulatory compliance. Or changed for ADA compliance or whatever, just to make sure we're in regulatory compliance. Along Long Hill Road, there is a, I believe, a sidewalk there as well. Which we will make sure that we have ADA ramps and compliance to make for that continuity. We do have a curb cut onto Long Hill Road. You'll notice that, that, that curb cup is very specifically designed to prohibit traffic going in. From the opposite side of the, the road from folks that are traveling. In the opposite lanes. Coming into Long Hill Road, really you can only come in as you're traveling. Believe it's, is it northbound? Yeah, as you're traveling northbound, that the, there, we very specifically designed that entryway so that it, it prohibits. One, folks from traveling out and crossing traffic or folks traveling in to, to do the same. We have gone to Connecticut DOT. And they have commented to have a no left turn sign in for the folks traveling southbound. And have a sign on both sides of the road that are very clear that you can't come in that way. So anyone exiting there, exiting will have to continue on into the right, a right turn only, can't come, come left on that side. Or you'll come out to Culver Ave and come to the, the intersection at the light. There's a rock of, rock wall across the front of the property. We were advised very early on by planning staff that that wall should remain intact or be rebuilt in its, its same integrity. And I believe it was taken down at one point and had to be rebuilt because of its historical relevance to the site. And we are going to be maintaining that with the exception of the, the location of the curb cut in and out of the. In and out of the property from Long Hill Road. Also, under the advisement of staff, we have done our best to maintain existing trees that are on the property. Unfortunately, much of it needs to be cleared and leveled for the development. For construction of the walls and the pavement and the like in the building. But some of the ones on the perimeter, we had surveyed and we believe that we can, we can protect and save the trees. Those are identified with these black circles here, the Xs are the ones where the trees that we're going to have to remove in order to accommodate the. The proposed development of the gas station. What I've brought up here is the landscaping plan. As you can see, along the back, facing the neighborhood, we have put forth an effort to. To. Add, add significant amount of landscaping into that tiered wall. So to buffer the neighboring properties across Brookhaven Road, we're not deaf to the, to the fact that, you know, we are in a. Residential community or we're budding a residential community. Even though we are on Long Hill Road. So we've made, I believe, a, at least a good faith effort in trying to soften. That side along with the tiered wall system and, and putting the landscaping in to shield and, and buffer. From the residential neighborhood. You can see there's a, there's a section here showing some, I believe the trees at, at maturity in front of those walls as, as well. So we hope that dresses up this area enough where you won't know, hopefully there's a gas station here, I know there's. Other aspects of the gas station will know it's there, but this will help soften it. We also prepared a. Lighting plan, photometric plan. I don't know if I have it in, in this. Set, but basically all the lights will be full cutoff, dark sky compliant and have a zero foot candle at the property lines. So the, the building. Is going to be, the parking lot will be mostly lit by the building and the canopy, but there will be some. Some pole lighting along the back, but facing towards the building, not, not to the neighbors. But make sure that we don't shine any extraneous light on, on that area. This here is the signage plan, the zoning. Regulations allow for a canopy sign. Identified, this is the gas station canopy. Allows for freestanding sign, and I believe there's also. We'll bring out when, if, when Peter comes up, there's some signage that'll be on the building as well, so. All the signage, these are just, you know, kind of mockups, these aren't actually what's going to be going there. They will meet all of the zoning code regulations as far as square footage is allowed for each of the individual signs. For, for each of the mounting locations that they will be on. Believe that covers the site, I'm happy to. Take questions now, or if you'd like to hear from, we have our landscape, I mean, excuse me, our architect here, if you want to. See anything with the building, I have those plans as well, I believe they're in your, in your packages. About the interiors, exteriors, Peter Springsteen is here, if you'd like to hear from him. And also our traffic engineer is here to answer any questions on traffic, he might, he may be given a. You know, just a brief synopsis of his report as well, so it's the pleasure of the board, what would you like?
Oh, we should hear from everybody that.
Sure.
Have first, and then we'll go to hear from the staff report and then open it up to questions.
Very good.
Commissioners.
That's all I have for the general site, so.
Good evening, Peter Springsteen, architect. What we've got here is essentially a one-story building, sort of New England style roof lines. There is a second floor space built into the attic and mostly that's for mechanical access, some dry storage. Also allows us to get out on the mechanical roof, which is a flat cutout in the back of the building. So you really don't see the mechanicals. From the front of the building. Or the sides. So this is the second floor plan here, you can see there's a stairway up, we have an attic trust here that gives you. Some usable space, we'll have our indoor mechanicals there. And we have a door out to the mechanical deck, which is cut out of the hip roof line. So this elevation here is from the rear. So you can see that cut out right here and we'll have a fence or a screen wall here. To protect people that are on the deck and also to help disguise the equipment. So on the first floor of this building. We have our handicap parking out in the front, next to the front door, which is right here, you have a double sliding door. You come into the retail area and we've delineated the various usages here for. Fueling patrons, retail area. And tenant patrons, patrons right here, and then our back of the house and storage areas outlined here and here. This would be the tenant area. So it would be a small, fast food type tenant. We have some, a couple of seating areas in here for people to sit and eat whatever they buy there. Men's and women's bathrooms over here, we have an office and a stairway going up to the attic area. Exit door out the side, we have storage along the back, walking cooler along the back, some more mechanicals here. Some more storage, electrical, so very typical of your convenience store. With all your utilitarian stuff in the back. And your retail front, there's a big entrance element. On the front of the building. And we will have the building signage mounted in the gable right there. And then the theme here is to have sort of a storefront type window system along the front to make it feel opened up. And some traditional type pilasters as you walk down the long building, the building's a hundred and twelve feet long by forty-two feet deep. And these will help to break up the facade of the building. And I think it's the kind of architecture you want to see in Groton, it's a little more historical reference than modern. Essentially, that's it. And there we have a bird's eye view, sorry, we don't have the landscaping installed into this, but you get a sense of the building here. And maybe that leads us. Into landscaping, traffic, okay.
Good evening, Todd Brayton with Bryant Associates, let's give a brief summary of, of the traffic report. So the, as, as we've mentioned, it's a, a fuel dispensing facility, gas station. There's going to be eight fuel pumps, about forty-seven hundred square feet for the convenience store. Sergio had mentioned there's going to be two driveways, right in, right out from Long Hill Road, the full access driveway on Culver Avenue. As part of our study, we looked at the intersection of Long Hill Road and Culver Avenue, there's also a, an apartment driveway on the other side. We looked at the two proposed driveways and also looked at the intersection of Brooks Haven in Culver, which also has a driveway across from Brooks Haven. We, we did turning movement counts last, last July, we did them on a Thursday morning and a Thursday afternoon, as well as on a Saturday. Just to get the, the count at those two intersections that I had mentioned. We did a field review of the area to look at existing stopping site distances, location of utilities, posted speed limits, that sort of thing. We also did a speed data at the same time that we had done the traffic counts the last July in twenty twenty-three. So based on the, the development which has the fuel pumps and the forty-seven square feet of convenience store. We determined what the trips we generated by the development. And so in, in the morning, there's a hundred and eight vehicles that would enter. A hundred and eight that would exit, as it been mentioned by one of the neighbors who are pass by trips accounted for. Which pretty much someone that's just driving by, they'll take a right in to the driveway on Long Hill, get their gas or go to the convenience store, come out and take a right out and continue on. So, so that our analysis, it includes all the traffic, the hundred and eight in the morning peak hour entering and exiting. But that just, we take some traffic out of the, the pass by trip, just to kind of get it more accurately, and we did use a twenty percent pass by rate. In the IT Trip Generation Manual, typically for development like this, it actually, the lower end is almost fifty percent. Sometimes up to as much as eighty percent pass by traffic. So there is a lot of traffic for this type of use, I guess, is, is passing by and just goes in, so it's not generating traffic coming so much from, from other areas. So again, hundred and eight trips entering and exiting the AM peak hour. Ninety-one trips entering and exiting in the, the PMP tower. And eighty-three trips entering and eighty-one exiting in the Saturday midday peak hour. So based on anticipated opening, we expanded the traffic counts to twenty twenty-five using a growth rate of point, point eight percent that was. Given to us by the Connecticut DOT Bureau of Policy and Planning. So we did capacity analysis, looking at the level of service. Primarily at the, the proposed driveway intersections as well as the existing intersections. We did that for the AM peak hour, the PMP tower and the Saturday midday peak hour. And again, future twenty twenty-five no build and future twenty twenty-five build conditions. And, and based on, on that analysis for the unsignaled intersections, which includes the two proposed driveways. As well as Brooks Haven and Culver Avenue. That there, there will be some change in level of service. Typically from level service B to level service C. But all, all of the intersections will operate at acceptable levels of service. Under future build conditions. And then for the signalized intersection at Long Hill and Culver, same, same idea, there'll be some. Some changes in level service typically A to B or B to C, for some of the approaches, but again, everything will operate at acceptable levels of service. During all of the peak hours. We did look at existing site distances at the proposed driveways. And based on the speeds that were taken on Long Hill Road and Culver Avenue. Adequate site distances available at both driveways in both directions. So based on our analysis, traffic operations on those surrounding roadways. In intersections will experience minimal change with the addition of the traffic generated by the proposed development. So I think that, is that everyone from our team, so I don't know if you want a question, if you want me, if I'm here, if you want to.
Well, wait until all the presentations are complete.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that'll conclude our presentation, or we'll take questions and. This director is here too, if there's anything that I can.
Turn it over to Steph then.
Okay, thank you.
Presentation.
So I'm not an attorney, but I am going to tell you this is in the CN zone. And fast food and retail are permitted uses here, gas stations are also allowed. Subject to conditions. What you heard from Mr. O'Farrell was a description of the zone, not, not a regulation. It's, it's meant to describe the uses that you might find in the zone, again, not a regulation. So the fast food place, fast food tenant will not have a drive-through, so there's no need for a public hearing on, on an accessory drive-through. Gas stations do have some conditions that involve the setbacks for the pumps, canopy requirements in terms of lighting, signage and height. Containment pads at the pumps. Gas stations are limited to two access points only and vehicle stacking at the pumps can't interfere with ingress and egress. As was noted, the site is comprised of three lots and those lots will have to be combined and a new deed. Recorded in land records before any approved site plan is filed. So the site, as noted, is adjacent to a residential neighborhood. Because of that, there is required buffer along that property line. And the regulations allow for three different options. They've chosen to use the option that is a wall with vegetation, evergreen vegetation. Ultimately, this commission has the authority to choose which buffer treatment they feel is, is proper for this site. I also want to note that there are electric vehicle charging stations here as required by the zoning regulations, they're on the, the north end, the Culver Avenue end. Of the property and the patio that was noted there and the fast food tenant. Will likely serve people who are there charging for twenty, twenty-five minutes and, you know, need something to do. That's, that's all I have, I don't want to reiterate what, what Mr. Torrance has gone over.
Okay. I'll turn, open it up to the commission for any comments or questions, I'll start with you.
We'll start the other end.
Why, you want to be last?
I think I want to be last, or in the middle of this.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to note one additional thing that didn't come up in the presentation. The applicant has also asked to eliminate the requirement of a sidewalk along Brooks Haven Road. Citing that the master trail pedestrian and bicycle plan does not recommend. A sidewalk in that area and there are no sidewalks in the Brooks Haven neighborhood. Um, a sidewalk in that area and there are no sidewalks in the Brooks Haven neighborhood. Thanks.
Okay, so let's start with you, Steve.
Just, just for clarification, there is no plan for a drive-through.
Correct, no plan for a drive-through.
Okay. There is circular traffic around the back of the building?
There is, yes, you are able to drive around the building, correct.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't see, cause you have a seating area, excuse me, um, a seating area up in the. Um, far left corner.
Yeah, the north corner.
Okay.
Northeast, north, east corner, yeah.
Okay.
There, we have, partially the reason for that one is to, to maintain, um. Access around the building for various reasons, you know, fire access, emergency. But also, um, I failed to highlight that there's a dumpster up in the, the south, uh, east corner. And, uh, obviously, uh, trucks will need to come in to empty that dumpster and that will be enclosed and screened properly as well.
Okay. Um, and that's, that's two-way traffic, I see, right?
Yes, it's wide enough for two-way traffic.
Okay. Um. You also mentioned that you serve just gas, so no diesel?
Um, I don't know if that's. There will be, yeah, but there'll be diesel fuel and, uh, I believe there's also gonna be a kerosene dispensing. Yeah, kerosene as well.
Okay.
So we, uh, yes.
You envision bigger trucks to come through?
Uh, we really don't have the site, site, we, we considered it, my client, you know, wanted to have larger vehicles able to be served, but. This, uh, station isn't going to be able to accommodate the, the larger vehicles, some may be able to get in and out. Uh, but mostly it's gonna be, you know, smaller type vehicles and maybe, maybe box truck type. But, uh, yeah. For fuel deliveries only, we can, you can come in from Long Hill Road. Part of our design was to make sure and we ran, we run what's called an auto turn simulation where we can actually. Use the CAD software to, to, to drive a vehicle through, we had to make sure that. A, a fueling truck can come in, fuel this and fill, fill the tanks, so. And, and, and be able to get out, which they can if they go one way in from Long Hill Road and then out Culver.
Okay. Um. Hours of operation.
Do you, uh, I believe we kept that open, they prefer to have it.
There's a note on the plan, Sergio, there is, yeah. And I can't remember exactly what it is, but there is a, a note, maybe on the site plan, C three possible.
It's on C three.
I, I think that's right, it's not in the large note page.
Yes, um, five AM to eleven thirty PM.
Five AM? Well, eleven thirty.
Five AM to eleven thirty in the PM.
Um, your lighting after closing. What is the, the light plan after you close?
After closing?
Yeah.
I, I don't know what it would be, it was just enough for safety and security, um, that we, we could. We're, we're open to whatever your preference would be, but typically, uh, lights stay on at night for security purposes.
Yeah.
It might be limited though.
It's lit up as it, you know, full canopy lights and everything.
No, no, it doesn't have to be fully lit, lit, there will be some lights.
Okay. When there was a talk of, uh, pass-by traffic, you mentioned, um, the traffic engineer mentioned. A hundred and eight trips and just, I mean, it's not a destination, so there, isn't it all pass-by traffic?
Well, like, like I had mentioned before, the range is typically much higher, but just to be conservative with our analysis, we used a lower number.
Yeah, I mean, nobody's driving to that.
Most people are not gonna be driving.
Yeah, so essentially, it's a hundred percent, well, I would think that it's a hundred percent. And then what do you consider, uh, uh, an accepted form, how do, how does it work with, uh, level of service at a light?
So, so typically, um, and it's, it's somewhat analogous with, with going to school, you get an A's, it's the best conditions.
But I mean, if you're at a light.
Yeah.
Is, does the level of service drop if you have to wait for two iterations of the light?
Uh, it, it would, yeah, but in this case, it's, that, that doesn't happen, the level of services see you better. So it actually delays are, and I, I can look it up, but it's probably like thirty seconds. On average, or sometimes people are gonna drive right through without stopping at all, and sometimes it might be a little bit longer.
Well, there's a light there.
That's, that's right, cause when, when it turns red, obviously you have to stop.
Yeah, but it'll never be the situation where it's a red, it turns green, and then I have to wait to two iterations to get through.
Based on the analysis that was dead, that wouldn't be needed.
Okay. All right, and then you didn't mention anything about the tank details, but I assume fiberglass tank, double walled, monitoring, blah, blah, blah.
All, all the things that will be required, yeah.
Okay, all the layers, one tank, two tanks?
There's two tanks proposed.
Okay, diesel and then high-toss and.
Not, I'm not sure, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, that's all I got.
Okay, thanks, um, you have any idea, um. How loud? Um, the music they play at the pumps or the backs are, once you get to the property line? Particularly in the back.
I know from experience, it's pretty obnoxious, I shut it off every time I go to a pump, but I don't know what that decimal level would be, I'd have to get that to you.
I think that's really important. Cause it kind of reminds me of the downtown mystic, um, problems we had, you know, was it, how loud is it to the people living there? And I always think that's very important. So I really want to know what that is, um, I just know I hear the music, well, I, I have an electric car now, so it's, that's, I'm, I'm out of touch. My apologies.
Well, there'll be electric charging stations here.
Yeah, that's right, I know, fast food too. But it's like, um, so I don't know what the noise is, for example, especially when you have a, a bit of a grade like that. And I think that'd be particularly in that, um, residential street back there.
I think my client would be reasonably, if there's something stipulated that the, the, the sound level has to meet a certain. Reasonable decimal level at the property line, I don't think that's gonna be an issue.
Okay, so I, I do think, I mean, personally, that'd be one of the most annoying things, probably about the whole operation, if you had to listen to that. Um. The, um, the trees you've shown, I guess Deb, that's a new way we have of showing trees, is that right?
Um, sort of. Different engineers show them differently, that, that's right.
But they are showing.
Yes.
Big trees.
They are.
Yeah, okay. That's good, um, I think one recommendation I would make, you have a lot of good species here on your list. You have a lot of evergreen species, you have, um, what the, um. Some of them, the, the shrubs are evergreen and they'll be quite big too, that you can mix, you could make sure the trees don't get bare at the bottom, nothing there. But, um, I would really urge in this case. That you really double up, I'm giving them a tremendous screen, cause that's gonna help with noise and a help with light. And just help it look like they're living next to a forest, sort of, so. Um, another question on the restaurant. Can people really go from the restaurant back to within that buffer? Between the gas station and, and residential?
I'm not sure, I understand the question, you say, can they?
If I take my bag of food, go outside, instead of sitting in the tables provided or whatever inside, I go outside, I go up on the back, whatever. And sit there and have a, um, over at lunch, whatever.
You mean like just in the green space?
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything that's precluding that, it's, it's a public, it's a public right-of-way and, and a portion, a good portion of it, just as anyone could. Go there, but I don't know if there's loitering laws that we, where you shouldn't be going over there, or if there needs to be a sign that says. Do not, you know, do not loiter here, I, I don't know, I don't think it's something that. Uh, because most of, uh, this art site is gonna be heavily, uh, landscaped.
Right.
So there's really no place for people to sit except the seating area, but, um. This is a unique site as, because there's, there's a pretty large grass area here, which we don't control, that's, that's all town, so, um. It, it, I don't know if the town wants to invite people to hang out there, or, or if they want to just keep it as a green space and have it landscaped, but we don't control that space.
I just wasn't served from your earlier statements, if somebody could actually go and, um, be in that buffer area. To the residential street, that's what I was talking about, the one where you're planting all the.
Back in here?
Yeah.
I think that it's gonna be too heavily landscaped for, to be actually hanging out there or sitting there.
And it's tiered, right?
And there's walls there that is tiered, yeah.
But it's tiered going up, right?
Correct, you'd have to scale a four-foot wall to, and, and there's.
I think.
Pretty heavily landscaped there.
Well, if you look at the.
Where's the lighting there? Yeah, that, that section I wanted to show.
And when you look at the top of lines, we're down on Brookhaven, you're down like at a hundred and thirty-four elevation on one corner.
I think this.
And the top of this is higher, it's about fifteen feet, that's what I'm saying you're going, so I'm probably saying the same thing.
So, th- this section kind of gives you a better idea of, of scale. There's two, um, approximately four, four-foot walls and then landscaping in front of it, so. I don't think there's much area, um, except within the public right-of-way to. To have space to hang out, so unless you want to sit in the grass or.
But, yeah, I think all the more reason to try to really over vegetate that within reasonable.
Sure.
Things, you know, um. I guess I struggle with the hours you have, and I was curious, do we know what the hours are of other businesses along Long Hills?
No, we don't.
It's probably twenty-four hour.
There are some, there, yeah, there are no regulations regarding hours of operation in this zone.
Would we have to put that at a special permit level?
There is no special permit, that is where you would do that, if, if indeed this were a special permit.
Yeah, it's not in the.
I know my client preferred to have the opportunity to have twenty-four hour and. I think he dialed it back to what we thought may be reasonable, maybe not to some, but.
Okay, cut a C there.
Conditional, you don't have an SP.
Yeah. But conditions can't be limited.
No, the conditions are strictly for the canopy, um, mostly, mostly for the canopy for the, the gas station. It's, you can't add conditions as part of your approval or modification.
Fix it.
Um, I guess, my last questions were on the building, you have, I guess the, um, equipment and stuff is. Really towards the residential street, will the people there be able to see that?
Um, I, I'm not sure, we haven't done an evaluation, um, of that, uh, I guess at certain vantage points, you might be able to see it. Um, depending how close you are to the, uh, the landscaping and vegetation. But we didn't do a, a sightline, uh, evaluation from any of the homes or from the street. Um, but as Peter mentioned, we, we could put some screening walls or something up there, uh. Definitely there'll be a safety railing, but we could put some additional screening so that, that equipment won't be seen, just as any.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to have the screening so that none of those houses would be able to see it.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what the light is like, you said the light is only at the front.
Yeah, actually located the photometric plan.
Okay, we wouldn't have any light at the back?
So, these are. Not the best to read, but all these spots indicate. Intensity of light with, um, and I know it's tough to read on there, on there. Um, but the zeros indicate zero foot candles, no, no light spread, which we make sure in most every project. That there isn't any light spread that goes beyond the property line, you'll see there's zeros back in this landscape area.
Yeah.
And zeros beyond the property line, most of the light is focused. And, uh, in, in the direction of Long Hill Road, there'll be just enough light in the back of the, of building just for safety and security. But most of the light is focused towards, towards Long Hill.
Yeah, you have four rows of zeros.
Yeah, tried to mitigate any impact of light shed, uh, towards the neighbors.
So, questions like.
Mike?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um. The hours of operation, there are there on the prints.
There's, there's a note on the plan.
Is the app bound by those hours?
Connection. It could change.
Without.
There, there are no regulations.
No, no, I realize that.
So, yeah, so it could change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Notice or notification to anybody.
Yeah.
I hope that you're able to keep it, at least those hours, cause it's, it is up against the residential neighborhood. Um, we usually see an EV at the handicap. Station, I think, wasn't that with the building?
That, that is true, um, there, there are no building codes for it, but he thinks that is coming. Um, and so he try, he recommends generally that you do that.
Gonna mention that.
Yep, no, that's good.
You know, it seems like you have a pretty.
I checked with the building, uh, code official and we did confirm that that's in the new.
Oh, it is in the new, but has the new one been adopted? Okay, and anyway, well taken, yeah. Yep.
Good, just point of clarity, so one of the ADA spots should be an electrical vehicle charging spot.
Because, right, because if the able population gets one, everybody gets one.
So does that mean we just move an EV station to the ADA space?
We can, we can figure that out.
We'll figure that out, thank you.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Sorry.
My apologies.
Could you tell me what the elevation changes from the, the parking lot to Brooks Haven Road?
Certainly. If I can find my grading plan. There we go.
The parking lot, I'm assuming is fairly flat?
Yeah, the, the parking lot, um, generally, uh, let's see. In forty-five, one forty-four, so it's, it's higher in the front, everything generally grades, um, from. See, west to east or towards Broke, Brooks Haven's road.
Yeah.
Um, the top of the wall, uh, is at one forty, around one forty-four, one forty-five. If you go into the street at Brooks Haven's road, you, it varies between one thirty and one thirty-three. So we're looking at, um. Yeah. Yeah. Ten feet and better.
And that's the deck, so everything is above that, you're. I mean, I feel better about that a little bit because it's. Looking up like this and something like that. Um, the only other thing that concerns me, and because we worked really hard when that wall was removed. Um, to have the person like put it back, like, uh. Is there any way that that section that's being removed could be moved around the corner and rebuilt so that we still have the same number of linear feet?
Yeah. Yeah, I think so.
Just stone for stone, however many stones there are that we're pulling out of there.
Uh, just so I'm clear, you wanted to wrap around down Culver?
I think so, and, and actually, we had, there are some stone walls interior to the site and we had talked about reusing those as part of the landscaping as well, so we'll just add that.
I mean, I would like to see that, I don't know if other.
Yeah.
People, I, I mean, we, that was a real bone of contention, and that was the.
I heard.
That's all, thank you.
Okay.
Anyhow. Okay, I'll back up through, I, I, I completely agree with whatever, however much stone wall there is now, you should end up with that much stone wall. And it doesn't matter where they go, just put it back again, and you certainly have enough landscape area to have that stone peeking up again.
Um, it's okay, we work, we'll work with staff on making sure that's accommodated appropriately, thank you.
Criticality for us is to exactly where, just as long as it reappears. There's no, it, I, I remember there is a, a section through some of the landscaping, but you don't have one through the entire, a, a, a section through the entire site, do you?
No, no, I don't believe we accommodated such.
Yeah, you have to make sure that is one of our things, especially in a site like this, that would have answered a lot of questions as to what this looks like. Um, but that said, could you go to the landscape plan?
Sure.
That shows that section, I think that might be the only place where you've got much of a section in the back. The bottom of that has that section, you've got that, that top tier. We can actually zoom in on that, the, the bottom sections.
Yeah, you have to move it, Sergio, as I zoom in, you can shift it.
There we go.
Is that out?
Helps a lot. Yeah, it'd be better if we had.
A good.
A house across the street, so you can actually see how far up this is.
Yeah.
And and how far back the building would be. Uh which is another one of my questions, but that top tier. Whether what kind of evergreen that is, with the light colored one up on top, it's planted on like a thirty degree slope. And I guess, is that ten feet wide or is that less up there?
Up on the top?
Yeah. Only the dimensions on that. It's supposed to be ten feet apart.
Yes, it's ten, that that section.
That's, cause that's like a really critical part of landscaping. And I'm wondering if that's awfully ambitious to be able to hope you get a solid landscape screen. Planted on a thirty degree slope. That's already up four feet in the air. So. Since you're saying it's there, I just wanna make sure there's some kind of guarantee in place that we normally don't have to have. That says for everything that's there has to be absolutely maintained, and as soon as one gets sick, you need to put another one there. And I think that's a, that's a tough tough one for there, you're counting on these things getting fifteen feet high. And if it's on a slope, that means all the water is kinda shedding right off because it's not being captured up there, it's not a regular terrorist. Landscaping kind of thing, it's.
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of.
Yeah, it's not very flat for something to get stabilized, but.
Almost seems like that wall should therefore be taller, it should be. Flattened out the top so that it actually ends up being the way that is.
Uh we are limited on the height of the wall uh based on the zoning regulation, so I believe four feet is with the ten foot separation. And in order to make up that that height elevation, uh that's what we had to do is to uh to slope in between.
Yeah, but if you stretch it, then it doesn't work, then it's, then then you need to do something else. In which case, maybe you need a little two foot wall all the way in the front to lift the whole thing up, if that's the case.
Mm-hmm.
Because. If it's just all the water is running out, that thing's gonna die. Cause it's, the base of that is the footing for the for the foundation wall, which comes back into it. You know, people realize that, that's foundation for retaining wall goes back, so it's blocking the the uh the roots. Um the fence that's on top there. On top of that wall. What is that fence? What's it, what's the nature of it? So until until those plants grow in, it's gonna be a really important fence to the neighbors.
The fence, the fence on top, do you wanna know what material it is, is that your question?
Correct.
I don't know if we've specified it, um I think the landscape architect just identified it as a decorative fence. If there's something that's specific, assuming you don't wanna see chain link, um if there's something specific that you. That you want to see, we we will consider it.
That decorative is a kind of a key word, but it's not just to look good because if you've got parking aimed right at that. In the evening with their lights on, that's when the neighbors know there's a gas station up there.
Right.
The rest of the time, I don't think they will, it's up too high. The lights aren't, uh the building lights are gonna be screened out in no time. Um but the any parking that happens back there and the staff is gonna be leaving at night, they're gonna turn on their cars and it's. Until those things are completely full, that's gonna shine out, so that needs to be an absolutely opaque fence. It doesn't need to be too high.
No.
But it's, but but it's also acting as a guard rail, so I imagine it has to be three foot six anyway.
It'll meet code, correct?
So therefore, a a solid three foot six fence that should also take care of. Any leftover acoustics that are left from there, that's the other concern, but I, it's gotta be solid.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
Of course, yeah.
For a a note that. Uh my other concerns with acoustics are not so much because actually I think the end result of this project. Will make the acoustics from Route One so much better in the neighborhood, this thing is up high and there's a building now blocking it. I think it's actually gonna be better, the pumps are on the other side of it, so the little sideways facing speakers, I don't think are. You could ever hear them, they just can't project that far. Uh maybe you'd hear it over Applebee's if you were listening, but I don't, I just don't don't see it, it's just uh it's a non-issue to me. Uh that part has worked out well. Is the only reason that there's the the loop, the the traffic loop all the way around, is that because there's? The trash pickup there, what's back there that required that loop all the way around the building, or is that the fire access that needs back there?
Well, there's, we we have allocated parking in the rear, so you need access to that, um my client uh. Prefer, we we actually, we actually considered. Uh to reduce the amount of pavement, which we try to do and uh mitigate the impacts from the stormwater. We actually came up with a um uh a uh. A concept where we didn't have any access to the back of the building. Um but it turned out that my client did wanna make sure that you could get around the entire building. Um but yes, there's a dumpster uh pad that needs it, you need access to, um and the the additional parking in the back. And I I think it's it's just good practice for fire access around, emergency access around the entire building.
I I think because it's a ten foot light difference, I'd be surprised if it wasn't that you can't. Get a fire engine around there, but at least you can get a guy with a hose.
Emergency services, yeah.
Right, yeah, well, that does pop in front and they need to be, I I can see that, but. I just have this terrible fear that someone in the future will buy this from you and then come back to us and say.
Wanna drive.
Put her a drive up. And. It sort of lends itself to that and note that's two thumbs down from us, but that would require hearing happily and would be rejected. As we did across the street. We already did across the street, so we're we're.
Um.
We knew that coming in, no variances, no special permits.
Uh for the traffic count, do I I understand right, I'm finally getting an idea of what. Pass by it kind of means is because the total count is based on the number of pumps. And the square footage, not a market survey, right? Because right now, there are. Gas stations on Route Twelve and R One, everyone in town has gas, we we're not. Driving all over looking for a gas station.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any more cars, and so the total number is kind of fixed, we hope it'll go up by thousands. But that's not a whole lot over a period of a day. So. That number is just based on the absolute capacity of this, an optimistic capacity.
Right, so there uh the I T Trip Generation Manual is made up of thousands of studies that have been done across the country. Um including facilities like this, so based on those studies. They come up with an average rate for how much traffic would be generated by a development, so it's the same for. Residential of fast food, any kind of, they have hundreds of study, thousands of studies that have been done. And that's where those numbers come from.
Okay, averages are bad things, because if this was next to a highway, you'll draw people off the highway, it's not.
It's not, yeah, it's not too close.
It's just not, it's, well, actually, it might be the first gas station you would come to if you cut off the highway, but then you wouldn't, so. Don't think it's amazing, so the the total number, as you mentioned, it might be maybe eighty percent pass through, saying. Ninety-five percent pass through, everyone's already got gas and there's other places to get gas, so. I think it might be very optimistic how much business is going to happen in here, so those numbers really don't scare me. Also because of the direction that it is, that we have X number of of trips generated. But everyone going to, pretty much to work, is going north. And they'll pull in and pull out without anything happening, so the morning rush hour doesn't affect the side road color. Evening coming back. Half of those people will. So I think the total numbers are actually pretty modest, I don't, I don't have a problem with any of those numbers, because I just think they're wildly ambitious. Um if you look at any of the other gas stations, and we're building a new one right down the the hill, this is one of two of these things that we're building. Concurrently, that are going for the exact same cars. So. I don't see any tremendous traffic generated and half of it's going right up there. So I think I'm okay with that, for the mechanical area on the back, just to go to you, Peter, is that. The the screening, I think, is really important back there, and we've kind of come into that. It's, you probably really know, is that. Yes, I thought it's gotta be exposed to the air, but I think. Until those plants are full size, which it'll be years down the road. They'll look at something screaming at them saying there's a gas station, there's a gas station, there's something there. So that. Roof line otherwise is great for minimizing the effect. And that thing kind of goes the opposite unless that screen wall. Is more or less opaque, if it were. Facing from the front, we'd put a railing on it, so you could sort of see it, but facing backward to the neighborhood. It's gotta look more residential, I would think.
Yeah, I think we've got enough.
Or something, but.
We've got enough open air there, I think we can push the equipment back and do a solid fence and not worry about airflow.
That'd be the way to go, but we probably no problem to see the door.
I think you go four feet high, so, cause this isn't real big equipment, it's.
Okay, yeah.
Uh small commercial.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, okay. So the only thing, the only thing for the height should be. Whatever the finished height of the unit is.
Yeah.
Need to say it that way, because it's always a surprise, and it goes onto a pedestal, it's a surprise, and now it's six, eight inches higher.
You're right about that, yeah.
I think I've got the lights, for the the canopy lighting, I I saw the canopy lights, which are, okay. Is the canopy lighting flood, the can, the bottom of the canopy, is it flush with the sides, or is it recessed up inside of it at all? It's flush. I know that's why they make it, so. Okay, well, a half an inch goes a long way with a light, and that's why, that's why I love that, but. But the uh, oh, oh, the beams are, too. Oh, that's actually a good thing, okay. Uh I saw the lights in there. They're fine. And see for me, sections. And that's it for me, thank you. Do we need to pay a sidewalk on the.
I'm not a question. Yeah. Most of my concerns have been addressed, except. I'm a little concerned with the traffic backing up on Culver. Waiting for the traffic light to change. How many cars do you really expect to see there, because you have a driveway into. Applebee's, it's pretty close to the traffic light, is it gonna go way way beyond that?
Yeah, so uh I I we did look at that, um just. Guess specific numbers for you. Um. So. There is, there is enough space there for probably three cars, maybe four, depending on on type of car. And uh the the queuing, based on our analysis, the queuing, what we call ninety-fifth percentile of queuing, so pretty much it will happen. Ninety-five percent of the time would not reach the driveway.
Wouldn't go.
Driveway, right, so it wouldn't be blocking anyone coming out. That's that's for A M, P M, and Saturday peak hours.
Yeah.
So so ninety-five, like, there there's probably a slight chance every once in a while it might go back, depending on. Maybe if if someone leaves like five people leave a birthday party at one time or or something like that from the neighborhood in the back, but. Uh but typically, that that's not gonna happen. They they wouldn't, they wouldn't be hused past the driveway.
But if they, if it gets too long, how do they? I guess you'd have to turn right and then go. Turn around somehow.
You probably would just wait for the for the signal to turn green and then it would go, then you'd go.
Go.
Cause it's gonna be a lot easier than trying to go turn around in the neighborhood.
Yeah. Yes.
Or you.
Just go to the front of the building.
You could also go out the other, the other driveway.
Okay. I don't have anything else, does anyone have any other issues? We have a mo- prepared motion that. Did everybody get that?
Anybody need a paper copy?
As they went out late. I just had.
There you go.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, actually, let me have. Just wanna keep one, yeah.
Does anyone? I don't like this word eliminate. It's like, it's not. Uh requirements, they're gonna strike their front of sidewalk in this location. Is delete, I guess is deleted.
No, no, the regulation is eliminate.
Is it really?
Yeah, that that's why, yeah, that's why I use that word, yes, that's an option, it's to eliminate the requirement, I know, I know.
Weird, but that's what the.
That's.
The legal ordinance.
Yep. Okay, it's postpone, substitute, or eliminate, those are the choices.
All right, A D R C.
Yep.
It's just a not. Use. Does anyone have any questions on this, does the applicant have any concerns with a opposed motion, I assume you've seen it?
Uh yeah, I don't, I don't believe we have any issues with the motion, we be adding anything.
In the tech items, there certainly will be some, like, based on this discussion.
No, just in in closing, I just wanted to uh thank you all for your time and um. Staff has been very accommodating and and. Uh the technical review um was very thorough, so we appreciate the assistance, thank you.
Does anyone have? Have any questions for the motion? So I'm, I'll make a motion and to approve a site plan, S I T. Twenty-four dash zero 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 six for a fuel dispensing station and convenience store. Three eighty-eight Long Hill Road with the following modifications, one. A note shall be placed on the plan that states, quote, any modification to this plan. Imposed by another federal, state, or local agency shall require additional review. By the town staff or the commission, whichever is appropriate, end of quote. Two. The lot shall be combined in a revised deed recorded prior to filing the site plan and land records. Three, the design engineer shall certify that the stormwater. Management system has been installed per the plan prior to issuance. Of the certificate of site plan compliance. Four, technical items is raised by staff shall be addressed. Findings. The Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the wall, fence, and landscape plantings on the east side of the site. Meet the antenna of section eight point one. Dash six of the zoning regulations. The commission finds there are no sidewalks in the Brookhaven Road neighborhood. And the master bicycle, pedestrian, and trail plan does not recommend a sidewalk along Brookhaven Road. The requirement to construct a fronter sidewalk at this location is eliminated. Is there a second?
Is that good?
Move and second, any discussion on the motion?
Just a question about, since the, in the findings, it mentions that the wall fence and landscape plantings on the east side. Meet the intent, but we're. Meant, we have some mentioned details about, sorry, as.
As modified.
As modified.
Yep, yep. In between plantings and on, yep, as modified. Yep.
What are those not, what happened?
It's gonna be a tech item in terms of the fence and the the uh it being opaque.
Oh, but not what you were talking about the thirty percent slope on that, you can't do anything.
I've actually got a note to look at that, so we'll.
And there's ways that you think that that can be. Redacted, then what other things would be on the tech?
Oh, there was a list.
Okay.
I mean, I have a list started of my.
I mean, I know, I just wanna make sure that when one person mentions it, we don't all have to come to agreement.
Nope, so. The fence at the top of the wall, um uh checking the slope. Um between the walls, uh reuse of the stone walls along Culver, make sure that's a note. Um ADA stall that needs an E V charger, um we're gonna meet the. Uh where are we, um? Uh we're gonna address lighting and when the lighting, what the lighting looks like after closing, that will only be on the pumps as noted here. Um. No. No parking on Brookhaven during construction, that was a really good one coming from the public, so, yeah.
So what about the evergreen?
They are evergreen.
Oh.
Yeah, the the plantings are are.
So they are required there.
Absolutely, that's, that's a buffer requirement is to.
And tell, add something about the screening and mechanicals?
Uh yep, I did, I missed that one, but yeah, I've got that one written down, that that will also be opaque and be the height of the mechanicals.
Yep, yep, yep.
And because the hours of operation are on the site plan, we can't touch it?
There are no required, there are no hours of.
What I mean, we're modifying the site plan.
Where you can't afford, I don't know if you can enforce.
It's true.
Without a special.
Oh, I don't know if you'd be able to hear it, and I don't know if you'd be able to see it. And I uh just mentioned one more thing that I'd written here, I forgot, is uh. The dumpster that's in the back corner. That that is, is there any requirement as to when they would come pick that stuff up? So they're not gonna be coming at three A M. And backing up into it.
But they don't.
Uh. Sometimes they'll operate.
Well, that's.
There's no way to control.
That's not a site plan.
Uh yeah.
Uh, yeah, um, I mean, I'll, I'll make a note. Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it, yeah.
This, the screening, it's fully screened over here. Well, sometimes it's just scheduling that kind of stuff.
Exactly, yeah.
All are, you know, it's just that, if you've got someone who's coming.
Yeah.
And they back up lights or things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The change, this as modified.
As modified, yep.
You agree with that?
Yes, I do, thank you.
All right, so, motion was changed. Any other points, so vote on the, on the motion as it is corrected. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. On list of technical.
Thanks.
So they scan station, try to do a roof like that.
So now I would have a more expression to chart, charge. You'll have Mercedes prices for the.
I know, I know you have to think about it, cause you don't wanna.
All right. Sorry, move on. So I move on to the next, uh. Next, uh, item on the agenda is, uh, site plan twenty-four zero zero ten. W N T site improvements.
Ronnie. When you get a chance, I'm gonna just reorient that.
Thank you. Can zoom in a little bit if you wanna re-center it. Got everything. Great.
All right, for the record, Brian Panico with Cole Civil and Survey, I'm the project engineer. Uh, representing building and property. The project site is at one seventeen Long Hill Road. About two point eight one acres, uh, that two point eight one acres is composed of three, uh, tracts of lands. Uh, we, uh, you know, initial inception, this project believed all three tracks were already merged, it appears that two of the three are. Uh, so as part of this plan, you will be, uh, proposing to merge all three of these tracts of land to create one parcel. Um, the property zone C R, uh, this on the corner of Long Hill Road to the northeast, King's Highway. To the west and northwest, on Bridge Street to the south, uh, there is frontage on all three. Uh, of those streets, uh, there is access to the property currently, uh, from Bridge Street and from Long Hill Road. Not, not access to Long Hill. Uh, there are other commercial properties in state of Connecticut. Property to the east, um, currently, this is the former ninety-nine restaurant building. Uh, associated parking lots, they're the better part of essentially what were like three separate parking lots. On the site, this was formerly the Volkswagen dealer, the Volkswagen dealership. Currently, the site also has an underground detention system, uh, for one of the parking lots, the other two parking lots, just kind of sheet flow. Uh, go off to King's Highway and then there is a drainage kind of swale ditch along the Bridge Street. Uh, property line, uh, that directed to a culvert system that runs up to the road and into, uh, the town drainage system. Uh, remaining runoff runs to a wetland, uh, which you can see is not on this property. Um, and can this still pick me up if I don't talk directly into it?
Absolutely.
Um, weapons, uh, off property and state Connecticut property. Um, so, I'm just gonna switch these actually really quick. This is a little bit of an overlay, it's a little different than the overall handout you've given you. Um, so you can see there's some existing parking here and the, all of the existing parking lots that's in this area drains toward this wetland. Uh, the remainder of the existing parking lot, which is kind of. In the background of this image, has an underground detention system in this location that discharges to King's Highway. Um, and then the existing parking area that's in, along Bridge Street here, uh, all drains and flow. Those kind of down and into the drainage swale that runs along Bridge Street, and there's actually a culvert under the road in this location. Uh, so currently the site basically has no, uh, water quality provisions to it, with the exception of the small amount of water quality that's provided by. The existing, uh, underground infiltration system, but that's only for basically this upper portion or the main portion of parking lot. Uh, for the ninety-nine, former ninety-nine restaurant. Uh, the proposal for our plan is to modify that existing, uh, basically update, upgrade, um. The existing ninety-nine restaurant building, uh, there's a proposed addition, uh, on the building as well. And a proposed patio, so it's a twenty-seven hundred square foot addition for the, just under a thousand square foot patio proposed. Uh, we've relayed out all of the parking lot, um, to make this kind of one contiguous uniform, um, space. Um, the biggest extension or the biggest change is that instead of this being two separate parking lots and, and everything we have now. Basically brought those two parking lots together. Uh, the existing underground infiltration system will remain, we made sure that all the grading and everything. Going on in that area still function to allow for enough cover over all of that, that that would still function properly. Um, then we just created, we created a low point in the parking lot here. Which will have a double catch basin and connect to another underground infiltration system. Uh, to pick up for the remaining, uh, area of the drainage area of that parking lot that we're now creating. Um, so on the site, uh, we have an. Increase of about forty-three hundred square feet of impervious surface, um, and that basically comes from, uh, just. Essentially reworking of all of these parking lots, uh, to provide for better circulation. Um, improve the safety of the parking lots, um, we've added sidewalk, basically from Bridge Street. All the way up, this, we're, we're kind of intending and calling more or less an employee and overflow parking area as most people are. Uh, park as close to the restaurant as humanly possible, uh, but. Um, this area being for, uh, employees and potential overflow, we've added sidewalks, crosswalks. Uh, there'll be signage, uh, stop signs, stop bars on all of that. Um, to make for safety, pedestrian access and crossing. Uh, what this also does is it does provide an access to the sidewalk system on Bridge Street. Um, there is existing sidewalk system on Bridge Street, King's Highway, um, Long Hill Road. Um, has sidewalks across the street, uh, at the time of the ninety-nine restaurant. Uh, approval that was deferred to be across the street as opposed to on this side of the street. My guess is because there are no other sidewalks making all of the connections and with all of these other crossings. They're just less safe pedestrian crossings than having it on the side of the street where there is not. Uh, a bunch of different intersections to act and navigate. Um, I believe there is a plan at some point for the town was talking about to eventually try to. Put in sidewalk along all of that and then deal with the intersections and signalization and all of that, uh, that's not obviously. Necessarily happening the time of this project, so in order to try to best keep it so that people are utilizing the crosswalks. Where they currently exist as opposed to us improving sidewalk to here and creating a dead end where then people try to run across the street as fast as they can and not get a. Vehicle, we think this is the safest option. Um. So we have, as part of this plan as well, uh, all of these existing parking lots are getting kind of redone. We've increased the amount of, uh, landscaping, interior landscaping, which is double of what the requirement that is proposed. On this site, we've added, uh, quite a few, uh, more of the interior shade trees, a couple of these street trees. Uh, there is current signage on the property for the ninety-nine restaurant, uh, that will remain, we've also shown another location for a sign. Uh, in this area, um, we'll, we'll work the staff, um, you've, uh, kind of final details of that, but location and placement. Of those is shown on the plans, and then we're proposing just to have a small sign off of Bridge Street, just so people know what that driveway is for. Um, but nothing major, not, that's not the main entrance to this site, the main entrance of the site is in this location. Uh, we are eliminating one of the curb cuts that was on King's Highway, that's in this location, restoring the sidewalk there. Um, so that, again, a few curb cuts as possible. Uh, sightlines, uh, for this, uh, project are well over the required minimum, you can see all the way to basically, uh. The three intersections of King's Highway and Bridge Street, uh, Long Hill and King's Highway, uh, the stop sign over at Bridge Street. And then over, I believe it's over a thousand feet down Bridge Street as it's relatively, uh, straight going in this direction. Um, so there are a hundred and fifty-four total parking spaces proposed on site. Um, the minimum, uh, requirement's a hundred and twenty, the maximum's a hundred and seventy-two, working with the applicant. Um, we felt that this was a, a good number, this is a number that they're likely to have, um, as far as employee and, uh. Patrons, uh, and then we are showing. Uh, these blue symbols here are all of our E, electric vehicle, uh, charging spaces. So being that there are a hundred and fifty-four parking spaces on the site, sixteen of those are gonna have to be EV charged spaces. Um, in discussion with staff, uh, in order to get to that, uh, future for twenty-five percent. Uh, we would likely say that, um, you know, kind of could be placed to here and then these could become EV or, or in some of the employee parking. Area could become EV, uh, in the event that it ever did change from the ten percent to an increase in number. Um. Lends itself to, uh, being able to put in, we're proposing to use mostly dual head. Uh, EV chargers, so every two parking spaces has one head, but you can put a charger on either side. Um, and then also we have, uh, the one, uh, van accessible handicap parking space that also has shown. Uh, to be, uh, with an EV charger. Uh, and actually next to that is a, uh. There's a non-handicap space as to not try to, uh. Limit the number of actual spaces that realistically can be used or for handicap purposes. So only one of them is used, but it is still the same dual head charger system. Uh, we're working with Brown Utilities at this point, uh. Unlike some other sites which may have two or three EV charging stations. Sixteen is quite a few, and so that's gonna require additional transformers, um, on the site, uh, we also. Just started talking about it actually tonight, um. If, right, depending on how Brown Utilities wants to handle the potential future to go up through twenty-five percent, should be thirty-six to thirty-eight. Spaces, um, that's a very, very large amount of electricity and energy used, so we're gonna have to work with them a little bit on. Uh, really work with them on location, on where they feel like the best location for that future. Uh, EV parking may be depending on what the limitations of number of transformers, where the transformer should go, uh, et cetera. Uh, but that's certainly something that the applicant, we are more than willing to, uh, to work with staff on. Um, overall, the, uh, site, we're providing another decrease on the peak runoff. Um, so at every location, um, again, we have the existing underground detention system. The new underground detention system that all drains and discharges to King's Highway at this location at this catch basin. Um, we have Bridge Street location, which we have a water quality, little detention basin. Uh, pre-treatment filter strips for water quality. And then in the wet, in the direction of the wetland, only a very small portion of this parking lot drains to that wetland. But, um, in working with wetlands and making some modifications at their request. We actually eliminated some of the impervious surface closest to the wetland, added a water quality basin and just modified her pre-treatment. Um, infiltration strips there as well. Um, we are, have well over a hundred, we've maintained and are getting over a hundred percent of the required water quality volume. On the area of the wetland, we're at about two hundred and. Fifty percent, I believe it was, uh, two hundred and thirty-seven percent of the required water quality. Um, so, again, we have a slight increase in the total impervious surface here, a couple of extra parking spaces, but we feel as though. Uh, again, we're decreasing the overall P flows leaving this site, um. Pretty substantially, um, to Bridge Street by almost fifty percent, um, and the wetlands by more, more than fifty percent. Um, and again, providing a much needed water quality to a site like this that was almost entirely impervious surface. Um, that will in turn hopefully alleviate, I mean, I'm not sure if there are any existing drainage issues. Um, in this area, uh, most of these catch basins, uh, again. Mostly sketch base and straight down, and there's larger wetland pockets that everything kind of goes under the road and drains too, so. Uh, most likely not, uh, any major drainage issues in this general area, but, uh, those reductions will help downstream overall. Um, I believe that covers the majority of, um, our project. Um, we do have a dumpster location that's existing, uh, it does already have screening. Um, conversation with staff was that we'll just make sure that, um, that screening is adequate and continues to stay adequate, um. The loading space for this building is in this location, again, most of this stuff is already existing as this was a restaurant. It's gonna still remain a restaurant, um, we're basically just trying to update this, uh. Make it look a little bit nicer, make it a little bit more functional, make the parking easier for people to navigate. Um, and just generally improve the site overall in the area, in this corner. Uh, so this will be a very nice corner as you come off the highway looking, coming down Long Hill Road. Um, I don't have the architecture in front of me, but, um, I was in a pack that they do a very nice job with these buildings. I got it dressed up. Get dressed up very nicely here. So you can see that you have their, their signage on the building, a nice couple, it's a nice couple of features, um. And a lot of nice windows, uh, along the new, uh, proposed, uh. Proposed portion of the addition. So.
Electronic, electronic rock.
So this facade will be, is the actual building, they're just making some modifications to it, planning on making it look nicer, this is the actual. Base of that proposed addition. And again, this is the addition in this location. Um, this is the backside of the building, so local area and the, the screen dumpster area. As well. And my overall floor plan, um, just. The kitchen and stuff like that are pretty involved in the same place, um, so. Really, the, the majority, the only real change in this location is this portion of the building that is getting modified. So this is the new addition here, and then they're modifying obviously the interior here in the patio, comes off of this location. So main entrance still at the front of the building facing Long Hill Road. That's where that, uh, main sign was on the building. I believe at this time, we've also addressed, uh, most of staff's comments, there are still some technical items, obviously that need to. Get figured out, uh, utilities and stuff like that, but if anybody has any questions. Have your answers.
Turn over to staff for their report.
Yeah, so, uh, Brian covered a lot, um, what I was gonna mention. Um, again, it's in CR zone, restaurants are allowed use, um. Very similar to the last, uh, site plan, uh, between the elimination of sidewalks, um, on the. Um, master trail pedestrian plan, it's the other side of the street on Long Hill that is recommended for a sidewalk. Um, which has been, um, now installed. Um, with regards to the tracks, we've had conversations and that will be, um, sorted out, that will be very similar to what. Deb was talking about on this last site plan, um, that will be recorded before any, uh, site plans reported. In land records, um. Do want to quickly. Um. Mention that, yeah, we did have extensive conversations about the, the parking reorientation, improving, uh, flow throughout the site generally, I think. Um, between staff and conversation for the applicant, I think, um, it's improved a lot more since what it initially was, which. Between staff and conversation with the applicant, I think it's improved a lot more since what it initially was, which. Initially was a car dealership, hence a lot of the odd placement and orientation, so I think it's improved, and I think it. Between that and the sidewalk connection and the interior sidewalks, there's been improvement there as well. I think that's, that's about all I've got. Again, so, you know, through this, this application and talking with. Building staff, you know, the ADA accessible EV spots really important, I think it's coming down the pike if it's not already in the building code, which. I, I seem to remember it is. It's, it's definitely coming down the pike, so getting ahead of that. And I think again, you know, to, to Brian's point about. Conversation with utilities, this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, the biggest development that, that triggers the EV spots in terms of numbers. So far, so.
Maybe.
Okay, true, okay, yeah. But, you know, just figuring out what that transformer situation is gonna be with talks with cotton utilities.
So, opening up to commission for their comments, do you wanna start?
I can start. Easy one. This'll be easy. Couple things, in terms of interior circulation, pedestrian circulation, so just going to your floor. That along the new additions.
Very eager to see since it has all foldable walls on the entire thing, doesn't it? Interior folding wall, so you can just configure it every which way. But it does open the entire thing up to outside atmosphere when you have it open, is that the way your other restaurant works? Cause there's no, there's no polite way to close it off anything off.
Also, our restaurants, we have a big, we'll be seeing outside bar.
Michael Hamlin, have him that Connecticut. Wooden tap restaurant, but most, most of our restaurants have outside bars with outside seating as well, so. The fact that this one we made a little bit more. So that the walls would open, with the windows or doors or whatever. And then you could have that outside atmosphere inside.
So the entire thing ends up being. Hopefully, it's a nice spring seventy-two degree day, otherwise. I actually digress, but that's, that's a nice feature. Along the addition, you removed a sidewalk that was there. And I understand, nice to have a green space, but then you're kind of left with an entire much lower. Area of the parking lot. With, I, I would assume exactly zero people would think of walking along the sidewalk. Around the back three sides of the building, they're all gonna walk up that driveway. And it's fairly, you know, a driveway. So, but was that ever discussed?
With that whole feature of being able to open that out from inside to outside. The, you know, kind of design intent is that if we don't have a sidewalk there, and in the sidewalk and the connecting features all force you around. This side of the building, then people aren't necessarily walking, basically past everybody eating with these nice doors open to get to the front door. Or people aren't just walking right out of the building, onto the sidewalk, back to their car necessarily.
The design in this restaurant too, the way, the way it's designed and the way it's set up, I mean, we have a similar restaurant in Hammond. And I would say. Fifty percent of the people drop off, park, and then the last person comes in, so it really cuts down a lot of the foot traffic.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, my thought is that. You say it'll force people to walk around, it doesn't force people to walk around. Nothing forces people to walk too far, they will all walk back up that driveway. So is there. So, I'm, I'm suggesting, I'll hear what other people have to say is that. Zero people will walk around, everybody's back there is gonna be walking up that driveway, that you don't want them to walk up. And it doesn't have a sidewalk to keep them protected from the traffic that's heading into them. So I'm uncomfortable with that, I don't know if there's room for. What size, if you get the extra couple of feet in there, so you have. At least a narrow sidewalk or something, so you can get those people there safely. Cause right now, I don't think they, they will go anyway, and they will be in the driveway. Just to get people off, off the roadway, I think it's, they'll, they'll be there, so. Whether or not you have arrows going the other way or not, there, the people will be there, so you can't stop them. For the location of the electric vehicle, electric charging station, so I'm kind of surprised to see somebody of. In good locations, typically we put them not in the best location, so that's non. Gas parked power cars don't park there. The ones on the side, maybe, the ones that are in front, especially the one that's shared right in front. Well, the ADA is okay, but he's got one next to the ADA that's not, and there's nothing to stop the gas, but gas vehicle from parking there.
Well, except the sign. Require, you're required to, if you park on the spot, be an EV charging vehicle that's actually charging, that's what the state law.
And so did the regs.
Okay.
And we did that specifically because, again. It's just the most efficient way to do it, to have the single EV charger with the two. By doing it this way, we, we accomplish the ADA space having EV charging. And then we're also providing it to a non-KDA space can still use. So that was the reason for that. And the other, the reason for the EV, the remainder of the locations was one in part of wetlands. Electric vehicle, plus things, you know, for no gasoline, these alone, that, closest to the wetlands. And then also with it being right by our proposed, nice big, how to open semi building. As well as the patio, no fumes, no gas.
So is that a, a police enforceable action now?
It's a zoning regulation.
It's just a zoning. Aren't bound by zoning regulation, so that's, that was my only concern, is that those. Sign or no, I wouldn't park there, but that, that was the reason why rest stops, they tend to be elsewhere, so that they're not too convenient.
We've never had an issue with the ones out here, we've never seen a gas vehicle. Parked out there.
That's because it's.
No, but it's pretty close to the sidewalk.
Yeah, but it's not right in front. All right. That was my concern all, but that was not, but I.
What I will say is, you know, looking at the, you know, future twenty-five percent, or getting to the twenty-five percent. The, the, the EV parking will not, twenty-five percent will not take up the remaining full frontage of parking. It will likely be more at the back here and into this area, so that you do provide. You know, I, eventually, you know, with.
But by that time, it won't matter. Poor, poor slabs likely still have a gas vehicle. They'll have a pity on me, let me park wherever. That's all I have. So, I, I think of the parking there, I mean, I understand your point, seems good, this is like. From what I see, what's going on here, it looks like a gas station of the future, people will, I mean, I, people who are renters will. Come to get their carts and get dinner and do everything at once. My biggest concern, what are you, so. The water that leaves this site. How, is it, are we doing anything to change the. Quality, water quality.
Correct, so the existing underground system will remain. But then our proposed underground infiltration system, basically the outlet of that system is higher. Is, is elevated, so all of the water is forced to sit in that system and infiltrate. And provide, and water quality be provided in that storage volume. This entire area is, there is no outlet to this basin, this is an infiltration basin, it's not deep, it's only a couple of feet deep in both cases. Two feet deeper still in both cases, and so, but what it does is it forces all of that initial first flush of, of storm water. Basically sitting there, and then it over tops, goes into the existing drainage ways. And that's providing the water quality, letting sediment filter out, letting. Contaminants filter into just through the soil. We also have the pre-treatment strips, which generally tend to do a very good job of collecting, catching sediment. Debris as well, they stop it from just.
Is this, because I know sometimes if they do fifty percent, then you don't have to bring the water quality up to. This, this, is this, this is my concern, I'm on Jupiter Point. This is going into Birch Plain Creek, we haven't been able to swim for the last nine days because of Birch Plain, that whole area is elevated. Bacteria, so from the first of July till today was when Ledge Light said. If there was no more rain, and so this is. Part of that watershed.
In something like, a project like this, where we're taking these old parking lots. That had no water quality improvement and no, like, no, no water quality measures at all, and now. We're basically sitting here and saying, okay, well. We need to provide water quality for that first inch of rainfall, that's the, that, that was the state code requirement. And so that's what these systems are all doing, that's what these infiltration strips are doing, that's what the. Water quality basins are doing, and by not just letting that water run directly off. You know, we're collecting and capturing all of these contaminants onsite, forcing infiltration, as opposed to just letting everything run straight downstream. Into the bodies of water.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know. Birch Plain Creek has been almost entirely lost, it's been culverted. It goes all the way up to what was Christie Plating, you know, up on, up on Bridge Street. And it's, anyway, thank you.
I just had a similar one to Hal about the EV's charging stations, their location, you know, this is your prime. You know, your prime spots, people wanna come in and park as close as possible. Is there a, from a design standpoint, I can understand if you've got one EV station, it's better to put a string of them. But. You got them all there, so. I understand you're not gonna move it now, or, and you can't accommodate anymore in the future, but it's just, because we had these discussions. When the regulations were being made about, let's not mandate where to put them, let's not. You know, tell them to put it in the first aisle or something, you know, and put them in the middle, you know. Don't want to stick them in the back, don't want to stick them in the front, but, you know, somewhere in the middle. And just for future observation, and a question for staff. Does the future rules, when it comes to twenty-five percent, do they assume a certain utilization? Or do you, when you power these things, you have to assume a hundred percent utilization, every one of us?
Right, and that's the question, we're dealing with Grotton Utilities. We don't know whether or not they're gonna require to have all the energy there for the twenty-five percent now, or if it can come later. And, and there's no trigger really for the, for the extra EV stalls at this point, not in the regs and not in the state statute, it's. In just forward thinking, you know, as, as the demand grows, at least you have the infrastructure there.
Are they fast charge? It seems crazy.
They wanna keep you there a long time.
My only concern is that if we make it twenty-five percent EV parks.
Is there a mandate that they have to buy something from your business to park there and charge your car?
There are no regulations about any of that. Exactly.
Well, well, I'm just saying, like, I, I just don't want it to be. The type of parking where, you know, people from the apartment building come down, they plug their car and they walk home. Come back in the morning, grab their car and then drive off, I mean, that, that would be really bad for business.
But they get charged by the hour.
Not when their car's not charging.
No, they get charged so long as, if, if they're not, if they're plugged in, the way a lot of these work, is plugged in, you're getting charged.
I have an electric car. When I go to the mall or go somewhere, I plug it in. But they don't charge me any extra when it stops charging.
No.
So, that's my only concern, is that if we create twenty-five percent of our parking, or EV only, that people don't just. Hold it in there, leave their car and go.
But you should be able to make money off of that, whoever's providing, if you have an outside vendor, you know, providing like some of them do. You know, there's these big.
Yeah, no, well, they all, they're all paid, pay to play, but.
But then they will give you something, right, for having their charges or.
Do you get anything from this?
They must, you must rent it out to them. No, I know that, but there's a business deal I'm talking about, they will get something out of it.
You do get.
Conversation.
Right, that is technically what the state statute says, the signage actually physically says. EV parking only, low charging. No parking except low charging, so technically speaking, you know, if you notice the car was there at close, and there's obviously a penalty there. You could technically call, you know, tow company and have the car towed.
They're trespassing.
But then they won't come back to your last rate.
There's a lot of other items and headaches and other things that would have to get figured out. Particularly, with the percentage of population that has EVs, and now if you're reducing the amount of parking spaces in your parking lot by twenty-five percent.
Right, for gas vehicles.
And not even just gas vehicles, not actively charging EVs.
There you go.
One more question, can he shut down the power to the EV chargers when he calls it?
Well, probably not.
Well, I thought you just asked a question.
My, my question was like, if they came during peak business hours, right, five o'clock on Friday. And then came back in the morning, you got it. Where that leaves me in a position of. Potentially twenty-five less spots. Or, I mean, their premium spots, seems like that creates.
Master cut.
Okay, well, we have a prepared, prepared motion. So everybody read it?
Anybody need?
Do you have copies?
The interior sidewalk will be a technical.
So anyone have any question on the proposed motion? No questions on it? So the applicant's seen a motion? Okay, make a motion to approve the site plan application, SIT twenty-four zero zero ten. WNT Site Improvements one seventeen, Long Hill Road, with the following modifications, one. Prior to filing an approved site plan, all tracks within the subject development properties shall be combined into a single lot. And the deed shall be filed in land records. Two, the design engineer shall certify the stormwater management system and associated improvements have been installed. For the approved plan prior to the issuance of the certificate of site plan compliance. Three technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. Findings, the commission acknowledges. That there is a pre-existing sidewalk on the eastern side of Long Hill Road. That was originally constructed as part of the ninety-nine. That was originally constructed as part of the ninety-nine site plan, elim- eliminating the need. And or practicality of the creation of a sidewalk on the western side of Long Hill Road. Along the frontage of one seventeen Long Hill Road. The commission finds that elimination of the frontage sidewalk requirement meets the intent. Of section eight point three dash five point C point one of the zoning regulations. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion on the motion? Haring none will vote on the motion for uh S I T twenty-four zero zero ten. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, any extensions, motion is carried unanimously. Okay, next, uh, we have town council referral for Brighton Heights request. For proposal. I had some concerns. With this thing, and I ju- came up with some words, I don't know. You wanna pass them out?
Yeah, I've got a couple of.
And this would also apply to the uh same. R F P proposal, that's added on to the agenda for the Pleasant Valley School request. And I had, I was concerned that uh the thing sort of got out of control. Little wordy, hard to understand. And should basically be rewritten, didn't wanna, I was too strong, basically saying, you gotta start over.
You know, I had a lot of concerns myself.
Yeah, so, so just to recap, the, the council has looked at both of these RFPs and by their process, they need to refer it. Um, both to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the R T M, I know the R T M has looked at. The Groton Heights School and had no comment, um, and you started looking at Groton Heights. Two meetings ago, I think, and since then Pleasant Valley has come in and it follows essentially the same format. Um, both of them have some requirements for affordable housing, if indeed housing is proposed, there are some. Not requirements, actually, uh, a preference to retain some trees, a preference for open space, um, that sort of thing, both of these.
So, I for one, I didn't have a real problem with, you say the wordiness, but I think there is some points I need to make and. Except for one clear exception that I had written down. I kind of understood. Because they have to rate a proposals. And the rating of the proposals is to how well did. The proposal enter the mail. And they had to lay out all the mail to be answered. So, it can't just be a, a property description, they just wanna say, here's all the things we expect you to follow. The housing is cra- is incredibly important to us now, it's worth saying. And in fact, I had one that just kind of led the other way, it was on. I noticed it, I don't have it up here, but on page eight, the bottom, it refers to the twenty-twenty-one housing study. Great, but then it says, which includes demands for mixed use restaurants, hotels and higher quality retail. So that statement, I thought had to get out there because that sounds like they're giving him. High points for including mixed use restaurants, hotels and higher quality retail, which is not really necessarily appropriate for that site. But it sounds like that's what they're saying, so this is a very specific one, that I think they should eliminate that phrase.
Alright.
But the rest of it, I think, is all.
Yeah, but it's very confusing, very confusing. And I don't think you should tell the people what to do. You're gonna restrict new ideas coming in that maybe nobody thought about, that might be a better suited application. Well, it's only ought to be just like what we have for requirements for subdivision. It just says you gotta have this mu- type of information. But you can put, do anything that's within the zoning regulation.
Aren't they the city zoning regulation? But the town is responsible for this? I know, but that's why, yeah, really that, that's why you have a very strange situation here. And I think because of the acreage on the Groton Heights one. Um, and, I mean, that location, I was there today just taking a look at, that's one of my favorite locations, quite honestly, in town. You have so many historical things there that are really significant. I mean, you got the obelisk that apparently they used to do the uh, the one in Washington D C, make sure it was gonna work and all that. And, uh, but there's all the history there and the views in this whole thing, and then. Would basically say, oh, the person who comes up with the best, you know, ideas gonna get the thing, and it's like. We don't have any standards, nobody's saying if this has to fit the neighborhood, or my real point is. Since it really is the city of Groton, shouldn't they be talking to the city of Groton first? And say, does the library need anything that would make sense for this building? Does the state need anything, is there some rearrangement of how the plots are here that might make sense? And move the housing back, it's gonna be housing from all these gorgeous buildings there, and is it gonna flow in design wise?
Well, it has to meet the Groton's city zoning requirement.
It does, and, and I think they also put in the R F P the desire to um retain the facade of, of the school. Um, and then there is a mention of a, a possibility of trading some land with the adjacent library, something the library has. Has expressed an interest in.
Right, but they didn't put that first, that's why I had a problem with that, because otherwise you have the deal, you have people, there's that new thing, the idea of trading land. It doesn't happen, in my experience, if you don't put that as a first priority, talk to the people who live there, who have these buildings. And see if a land trade makes sense, maybe it doesn't, you know, and then you could go forward and say, okay.
There have been a number of discussions with the library about a land, ab- about a, a trade with land.
Right, I don't see it in this.
I thought that was in there.
No, I mean, I don't see any recommendations that we do, this, that, and the other thing, I just think that's, if you don't do that first, it's unlikely to happen.
What if they want to put restrictions in, they, they just add them. I mean, if that's what the city or town wants.
One is restrictions and one is desires, so, they do wanna steer it in a certain way.
But it should be simplified, and they, or it's gonna get overlooked. Or maybe that somebody's gonna come up with an idea that nobody thought about that really makes more sense.
Right, and it keeps talking about the town of Groton throughout this, and yet it's the city of Groton, right? And this, again, again. Community background, established in seventy-five, the town of Groton. I just think it, for sensitivity too, we'll talk about. The players that are in there, and hopefully the, the, the city will have a seat at the table, as they say.
They're trying to all, all the hi- historical information in it, like the city of Groton is this, that and the other thing, completely superfluous. That was just, it just added to the fact, which, which maybe you think is confusing, I think it was confusing, it's like. It gl- your eyes glow so off to see it, because it has nothing to do with a developer coming in.
It could distract the developer, the developers may say, I don't wanna, it's too complex of a. R F P, I'm just gonna throw it out the window, ignore it.
Well, then they don't get.
You really need a sales pitch that's separate from the stock.
That number eleven on page twelve, it says development guidelines, and it starts off, the town of Groton desires the property to be developed in a manner generally consistent. With the development guidelines listed below, um. And it's like, these guidelines are not intended to be mandated, blah, blah, blah. And so the city is not involved from, doesn't seem to be, and the first bullet is implementation of quality development, cleaning, blah, 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 there will be an asset to the town. Right?
Well, the city is part of the town, so that's, yeah.
Who's calling the shots? Yeah, it's not the city, you know, if I were living in the city, I'd be going.
No, but, but that's true, I mean, the town council is going to make the decision as to who the preferred developer is. So, so the town is making the decision as to who the developer is, right? But that developer is going to have to go through the city process in order to get anything approved.
It has to meet the city's only.
It still says a town.
It's as simple as that, it should therefore be a benefit to. Grotten City and Town. That's, that's simple, and it's. What does that mean? Who knows, but it just means that when they're giving their spiel, they should say, and this is a good thing for both the city and the town.
Exactly, be more diplomatic, I don't think this is a very diplomatic. For me, if I were coming from the outside, I'd be totally confused.
I just think if we're going to come up with some kind of comment on it, it should be kind of specific. But it's not to say, I don't wanna say it's too confusing, rewrite it.
No, it's terrible. No, it's terrible. It really is poorly written, and there have some of these thoughts in it are ridiculous. But, I mean, how do you make a judgment of what, what's best for the town, you can't judge that, you gotta look at the. Different choices and say, which one is, is the best? And have some rationale for going through with it.
Well, here you have benefit to the town is thirty percent.
And I would, I would say not necessarily, because you're hoping to see like a point system.
No, I'm not looking at a point system because I don't think you can do.
No, I don't think you can.
No, it's fuzzy, the whole thing is gonna be fuzzy.
But it is fuzzy.
And it should be, and you, you should let the people that are doing the, the selection process. Figure out how they wanna approach it, not part, it's not part of the R F P. That's just telling an applicant, this is how you submit an application. That's all this is for, is an R F P.
But they say how they're gonna evaluate it, and that would, thirty percent is a benefit to the town.
But what does that mean, what is benefit to the town?
That's the way you do milk cons. Design build milk cons, you have a statement like that, the designer. You actually said to the benefit of the nation.
Yeah, but the taxes, maybe the taxes aren't as important as something else.
That's exactly true.
Right, so it shouldn't be in there, it should just say as a general, that might be one of the requirements. Is what is the benefit to the town, and the developer should put it in there.
And to the city.
Or the city, town and city.
Then you'd wanna want to say, what are certain benefits that the town is looking for?
Yeah.
Or the city, I mean.
Oh, it's always town and city, the town and city, or just. You have to tell them, tell the prospective developer, what benefits you're looking for, for example.
Okay, but then that would be a requirement, but the way it's written now. It is just got a lot of extra words.
Well, I know, but if we just say, it, it's too wordy, make it smaller. They're not gonna do it.
No, we'll work with it, they had to work together, so they're having one voice saying, this is what we want.
Well, I'm saying, but you have to tell them what it is, and not just say, try again, it's too complicated.
No, I, I, I mean, I think if, if you make the comment that, you know, there are redundant parts in here. And, and some editing needs to be done for clarity. I, I think, I think that will happen.
So I think that's, that's, that's more specific, need to remove redundancies. You need to always say city and town, you need to absolutely don't put any. Statement like vital thing that, that looks like it's indicating a preference to something that we're not indicating.
Exactly.
Okay, that, that, that we should say.
I think those are good points. And then we'll get another review.
No, they, they want the comments for, on this one, this week, yeah.
Yeah, but you could spend hours coming up with the comments, I mean, it was, I think it's. Yeah, but the guy that writing and he, he's looking, trying to generate votes rather than actions. You know, like, it's not a benefit to the town, one of the things was having a union doing all the work. We don't care, I, I mean, you're literally looking for long range. Change that's benefit to the town, not instant.
And, and that might be a thing that you wanna tell us, that benefits to the town should be long range. Now, having local employment is okay too.
Well, I don't have a problem.
Okay, well, that's not long range, but so that's with the exception of perhaps.
No, but the way it's written, it looks like somebody's just. Taking things that are there for political purposes.
And a lot of it was just documents, or I got this document, get a historic document, just a list of documents, and they're trying to highlight things of documents and. It might be okay to have a list of the documents you should look at, and then don't say anything else about it, here they are, here's the references. You're resting with, here's a list of preferences, and in order.
But it should be.
Should be in order to the preferences.
Yeah, but it should be very clear and simple.
But the general waiting is for the whole.
No, they wait, they're by presenting what they want, but there again, it's from the towns. I think that would help that boom.
But you can't numerically do it, I don't think you can do a numeric on the horse. And that's what is in there now. And I don't think it should even be in there at all, because that should be a separate process. For the, the town to come up with, as to how they make their evaluations.
I always found that actually kind of worked alright.
What?
To have percentages and numerical points and things like that. When you've got, if, if, if you've got more than like, if you've got three people coming up with good ideas, then it doesn't. Then it's gotta be like, what, which one do we like the most? If you've got fifteen people coming up with things, how do you sift through it? And numerically is the way to sift through it. These guys are just the bottom, I can't spend all my time trying to make these terrible ones good. So just knock them out, and we'll just stress on the, the ones that clearly, and they're clearly good because they rate it high.
Yeah, but how do you do, do something like, say, open space? If you wanna have, no, I mean, how do you give points to? How much open space is worth, if you're gonna add it or make it available to the public? You know, how do you give that points, you can't.
You can, it might not be valuable.
But is it worthwhile, that's why I think the people doing the evaluation, maybe.
Acre isn't as many points as housing per unit, you know, that's the kind of thing, so that's, that's how you weighted.
No, I think you talk, you end up talking in these situations, and you have a little bit of training.
Yes.
What the important stuff is. That's what we do in the P O C D, it was so funny, we were all aligned correctly, who we thought was good and why, I, I was shocked.
I just, look at, looking at their criteria, I, I think that there's a bunch of other things they could have put in there. That are more specific, you know, environmental impact, uh, energy efficiency, um, you know, a bunch of. Things that could have concrete values, you know, and if somebody has. Um, you know, something and it's like, well, you know, it's unfortunately, it's a, you know, but let's just hypothetically say. Yeah, it's a small nuclear plant, you know, and then it's like, uh, or it's a school. But it's gonna be this kind of school, you know, for special arts or something, you know? Um, you know, vastly different things, but how would you evaluate with their criteria, those would almost come out the same, you know, it's like. One would be more financially beneficial, you know?
Well, that might be one, a case. Say a school, if somebody wants to put a specialized school in there.
Yeah.
You might get no tax revenue, but it might be more beneficial to the community than the town. Cause a, a lot of taxes isn't gonna affect your mill rate.
With this um criteria that they got here, pri- project approach, I don't even know what that means.
Yeah.
Approach gets twenty percent of the.
There's some crazy.
Pretty nonspecific.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of stuff like that.
That's why. I would think a, a match to the paper would be the best.
But I would think of things like, you know, environmental impact, efficiency, um, you know. Needs, satisfying needs in a community, um. You know, it's probably half a dozen.
Yeah, um, I mean, keep in mind that some of that stuff is gonna be evaluated by, by the regulatory bodies. You know, by, by the planning and zoning commissions, um, I, I mean, the council is just trying to use this to. Kind of let uh someone who might submit a proposal know generally what they're looking for. Um, I mean, they're not gonna be able to eval, they're not gonna be able to evaluate environmental impact. You know, and whether the environmental impact of a certain project um is. Better or lighter on the environment than another one, I mean, the council's just not gonna be able to do that kind of work. Um, commissions will. Um, and so I think they're, they're trying to, you know, generally. Show the direction that, that they want a developer to go, they want it to be of benefit to the town. Benefit to the town in terms of taxes generated. In terms of housing, they're saying that housing is important, although it's not, you know, that, they're not saying it has to be housing. Um, I mean, I, I think they're trying to. Just sort of say what they would like to see without prescribing what the development should be, they want to allow some kind of. Creativity from the development community. Because they couldn't just say, well, tell us what you think, you know, they had to, they had to give them, have to give the developers something. Um.
But don't they get to choose the developer?
Well, that's just what it is, but it's based on all this, yeah.
All they're doing.
That's right, I mean, that's why this is kind of.
Backing back to the, um, rural school.
Yep.
Did, we didn't have a proposal for that right from the town, that was a state.
Oh, it's no state property, yeah, right, that's right. That's right, but I mean, a sealy school, right? Followed generally the same process, you know, it was, there was an RFP that went out. And probably three or four development proposals, um, you know, responded to the RFP. And, you know, the, one of them was chosen based on, you know, the amount of tax revenue that might be coming in, the development that the council wanted to see in that area. Um, I mean, uh, you know, I'll, I'll be honest, it's probably safer just to say, edit this thing for clarity. And, 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 you know, eliminate the redundancies and, and make sure you're talking about, at least in terms of Grotton Heights, that you're talking about benefits to. Grotton as a whole, which includes the city, um, rather than trying to wordsmith the document, you know.
That's good, yep.
Uh, it's, I, I'm, it will get edited. How's that? I, I'm, I'm quite confident of that.
No, but what do we, how do we submit or what do we submit?
I mean, maybe you can just, just say just those things that you've been talking about, you know, the commission recommends that it be. Uh, you know, edited in order to eliminate redundancy. Um, to make it more clear what the, what the council is looking for, that. The benefits are both to the town as a whole, including the city, um.
And swamp.
Right, I mean, and maybe to, maybe to set the priorities of, of what they're looking for, you know.
Clearly, an ordered priority.
Yep.
List upfront.
Right.
Yeah, that's what.
What the desire is of.
Yep.
It should be clear.
Right, and.
And I don't think it is.
And maybe the editing should also, you know, put all of these links in one spot as opposed to all through, um, I, I know. One member of staff is thinking about, you know, doing the highlights of each of one of those. Reports rather than making somebody have to go to it, you know, what's, what's the important part in those?
That could do, cause you don't want them to have to read the entire report.
Right, exactly.
To the thing you care about.
Right, so I, I mean, I know there will be some editing.
But you shouldn't have to read the entire body to get to the juicy parts.
Right, right, because there's a bunch of recommendations in there, which is the one that you guys are talking about, you know, yeah, yeah.
So, where do we go from here? I mean, we gotta have some, some input.
No, I mean, no, I mean, I can, we can write a memo with just those things that the commission recommends, that these things be edited to do all of.
Alright.
This stuff and just leave it at that and. I, I don't know if you wanna use that same language for Pleasant Valley as well, Pleasant Valley obviously is coming to you.
There's, I thought we already.
Same format, right?
Same format, yeah.
It is, okay, absolutely, alright, so we'll just combine that.
But just one, but the one in the city has to recognize.
Yep.
Hmm.
Okay.
The only thing about Pleasant Valley though, you really have a big forest in the back, you know, and I, to me. It's a different animal completely than the other property, but if there's some way, and you have such intense. Housing, like backing up to it, if there's some way to make that, you know, nice feature, leave as much of the forest as possible.
Well, that would be one of the things that should be in the R.
And, and actually it is in here, retention of significant trees and plans with new landscaping were feasible.
It should.
Preservation of open space.
Yeah, they do that.
Should address the adjoining property, but just like where you're. The write up of your, the staff for these.
Right.
Site plans, they always address the adjacent, what's adjacent and what the zoning regulations are adjacent to. I mean, that's the type of thing that would go into any RFP, right?
And on the regulatory end for Pleasant Valley, you know, it's in the W R P D, so there's.
That's another.
Yeah, you guys will have some.
Those are the specific restrictions.
That's right, uh, yeah.
Would make each RFP unique.
Exactly, yeah.
So you think you have enough?
I, yeah, it, it, I think.
Does everybody happy with that? Cause we won't, we have to, we won't have another meeting.
No, no, that's exactly right.
Tonight's the last night we can.
That's right.
I think we have to run with it, we don't have a choice.
Right, and again, you guys.
But that's okay, I think it's much better.
Roll on, on Pleasant Valley, if, if and when it ever comes in.
Okay. Alright, no business, we have, uh, some referrals. For, uh. CBA.
Right.
First one is fifty five Irving Street.
Right, so actually both of these referrals are for setbacks for oddly shaped lots. I mean, both of them are, are sort of triangular and in order to do the additions they wanna do, they need setbacks, setback variances.
But if you look at what's really weird, the one on Irving Street. It's not a straight line on the property.
Right.
It goes in and out.
Yep.
And I went up and looked at it and they actually have plannings that go and reflect. I, there must have been a stream or something.
Maybe so, yeah.
I bet it was a stream that was there one time, maybe it's still there.
Yep.
That's really the bottom, I just thought it was the weirdest thing. Does anyone have any concern with those two?
No.
Nope.
Two items, so we'd have no comment on those. And the town council referrals. We're gonna cover that.
Yep, yep, good with that, yep, yep.
Commission reports, reported chair. I see we've got a redo of the reissue of our zoning regulation.
And I'll, it, it includes the latest zoning text amendment that's not, um, effective yet, will be effective on the fifth.
That's what I was wondering if.
It's in there.
That's what I was wondering whether we should wait for that, but it is in there.
And you're going to be getting that, we just didn't print yours out, cause I know you already have the, the new text.
I got the new text.
But you don't have the amendment that was just passed and we're gonna get that to you.
Perfect.
Okay. And, uh, has any progress been made on how to identify effective pages?
It's still the same format as it was before, so no.
No, not on this, but I mean.
Uh, we, we haven't, we haven't gotten around to really discussing it.
That's what we're.
I know, I know, I know, I know Deb and John are aware of it.
We've gotta be there sooner or later.
Yep.
Cause it, it's gonna get worse.
Uh, maybe.
Well, I don't think you wanna reissue this every time we have a whole change.
Oh, no, 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 we'll, we'll slip, we'll give you the amendments and tell you where to slide them in, but yeah.
Yeah, but you gotta be, if you get interrupted or something happens after ten of them, you gotta know.
Oh, I know, I know, that's right, I know, I know, yep.
Like even this one doesn't have the pay, uh, ID on each page, which Rev it is, is it?
No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't, because it only identifies the sections that have been changed.
Right.
That's right, those do have a Rev date.
Okay. Reporter commission, does anyone in the commission have anything to report? How about reporter staff?
Uh, two things, um, first of all, plan of conservation and development, um, Horsley Witten is going to be doing the work for us, that we've signed the contract. Um, right now they are preparing an information needs plan, that's the first thing in their scope. To just figure out what they need and who they need to get it from. Um, and we anticipate like a kickoff meeting with commissions, uh, towards the end of the summer, early fall. Um, and then the other thing is, um, Connecticut APA is doing a housing forum in September in New Haven. It's a full day. Um, and they are inviting a member of planning and zoning commissions, um, as well as staff, so I don't know if anyone is interested in this. Um, we'll forward the letter on to you, but let us know if you are. There probably will be carpooling options, but it's like eight thirty to four thirty in New Haven.
And two credits, so we don't have to.
So you'll just send out.
I'll send that out to you and let us know as soon as you can if you're available, September eleventh.
Okay, anything else, Doug?
Nope.
Then we have our ASP report and application update.
Any questions on this?
Does anyone have anything else? So. I'll make a motion for adjournment, so a second, a second.
Alright.
Alright.